This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to start a couple of minutes late, but we will now start the June 27th meeting of the Coopville Town Council, and I invite you all to say the Pledge of Allegiance with us. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to note for the record that four of our council members are here, and Councilmember Jesse Henderson has asked to be excused this evening.
I'm going to excuse Councilman Henderson.
Moving second to excuse Councilman Henderson, although it may ever say I am opposed. Thank you. Do I have no changes to the main agenda? Do any council members have any changes? Okay, so we will approve the agenda as submitted. Have you all had a chance to read the minutes from our June 13 meeting?
Yep.
Any changes or corrections? Okay, this will stand approved as submitted, thank you. Okay, we're in room 34. So I am very happy to report that every one of our pride events went off without a hitch. The parade was attended by hundreds. I've heard people guess anywhere between 600 and 800 people. Most of you, I hope all of you were there. And so, I'm not good at guessing, so I don't really know. But I did not hear a single negative word, didn't see a single protester. It was all love and happy and joy-filled day. And so, I can't hear you. I don't know if it's just me, or could you get closer to the mic maybe or something? Thank you. Can you hear me? Is it any better now?
Yeah, it's a little bit more.
It's better now? Okay. So everything, the morning events, the parade and the picnic were centered around the farmer's market, which was, obviously our Green is a beautiful area. They have community events, but it brought a lot of business to the market that day. So that was great. The movie night had about 25 people show up, which it was chilly and windy. And so, that was really fun. It was nice. I mean, people of all ages, adults were there, families were there. They had some technical difficulties, but they finally got those figured out. Everybody stayed for the movie, the Disney movie. And Kate and Andrew informed me that they purchased the big giant screen and the projector. So that equipment is available if we want to continue or any other group wants to continue movie nights in the Green. And finally, I wanted to just do one more thanks to Kate and Andrew, owners of Meat Market, for all of their planning and promotion for this fun, all these fun, family-friendly events that we had. And it was just a special day. The thing I forgot to clarify, which is the most exciting at all of all, we are the proud owners of nine out of 10 easements for Big Cedar Lane. And the 10th easement is agreed to and negotiated, but the owners live in New Mexico. So we're trying to, and it's an elderly woman. So our attorney is trying to get a remote notary figured out, somebody that can help her. And her son is also in the area, so he can be there to help her. So we really have 10 out of 10, but we have paid for nine of them. We've reported, they're done. So as you all know, that's been a long, arduous process. So really glad to have that done. Donna is with us online tonight because she is attending a meeting in Port Townsend tomorrow morning for the Creative District as one of the three town representatives. I mean, three representatives from, oh yeah, from the town of Coopville, not from our staff, but people on the Creative District Board. But earlier, a couple of weeks ago, Donna and I also met with two representatives from the state Main Street Program. They were here to evaluate Coopville's program and make suggestions. I, you know, I reported that I believe our Main Street Program is doing well. And they've been reevaluating their priorities, as I've been talking about. They have reactivated their Main Street model of working committees, which are getting a lot done. The town's been invited to be represented on two of those committees, the Design Committee and the Economic Development Committee. And so I think we've got a good partnership going. And, you know, they have a relatively new board and a relatively new executive director. Haven't quite been around for a year. So they're all still finding their way, but I think it's going well. I got to meet our new, Snow Isle has appointed a permanent full-time librarian to Coopville. Her name is Emily Felt. And she, I got to meet her. She is really fun. She is a born and raised Island girl. She graduated from South Wyby. And she's worked for Snow Isle on island and off island. I think she's only 14 years, it might have been 11 years. But anyway, she's coming to our next meeting. Her and I believe someone from Snow Isle Regional. And they're, they just want to come, and Emily wants to meet you, and they want to talk about, let you guys know what Snow Isle is up to. Got a lot of interesting programs. I also had a meeting with our new permanent CEO of Wyby Health. His name is Nathan Steigs. He's from Texas and has a lot of experience working with rural health care systems, helping them to be more financially stable and provide quality care. He's excited to be here. He has moved around a lot with his company that staffs hospitals, but he hopes that this is his final move. And he and his wife hope that they retire from Wyby Health. So that would be nice to have that stability there. And then, I just, I don't know, any of you guys, do any of you guys know Samar Arnie? Okay, so Samar Arnie is the wife of Captain Matt Arnie, who was our last commander at the base. She was a pistol. She got so many interesting programs started at the base. She really had a, really had a focus on Navy spouses and did a lot of, just in the short time that she was here, they were only here for three years. In the short time she was here, she got a lot of education programs and training programs and jobs, job affairs, and got good qualifications and good jobs for a lot of Navy spouses. And she just gets things done. The House, Wyby Health just hired her to be the new director of their foundation. So her and Matt and their two children, when he was done, he retired from the Navy after Wyby, and they moved to Mill Creek. They moved off island to Mill Creek. So she's commuting. What she's doing is like, I think she's, I think she said she's coming to the island two or three days a week, and then she can work remotely. She's here quite a bit, you know, obviously, because it's a new job and she's meeting people. But I am, you know, the foundation is, the fundraising arm of Wyby Health, they've always done well and always had a good reputation. But boy, hiring Samar is really a feather in their cap, so I'm excited about that. Okay, so, only one of you has heard about our sad vandalism. So the story on that is, we've been having consistent vandalism by the same person in, only in the restrooms, in the parking lot, the public parking lot. No other restrooms, just those four. And the person randomly moves from one to the other and does it in one bathroom. And he like started out like every week or every two weeks. And it's the same, the reason we know it's the same person is because it's the exact same vandalism every time. So it's a carving of a design into the drywall that has to be patched and muddied and fixed. Sometimes that's all, but most of the time, there's a light, a $75 light sensor that's broken, or the ceiling fan is broken, or the ceiling light is broken, or all of those things, or a combination of those things. So this has been going on for a few weeks. So just last week, we were, Joe and I were talking to our marshal about getting surveillance cameras up in the parking lot. And we were, you know, we just started talking about what's the law on that? What's the requirements for surveillance? What kind of a notification? How to suspect public records requests? You know, nothing can ever just be simple, like slapping up a couple of cameras. So, but then before we can get that done, we just talked to the marshal last week. This weekend, someone, and I don't know if it's the same person, tried to start a fire in one of the center bathrooms and didn't succeed. There's just one of the center, you know, there's four bathrooms and they're all individual. So one of the center bathrooms just has a little scorch mark, no big deal at all. But then succeeded in the other center bathroom. I mean, I have pictures I can show you. It got so hot in there that the plastic changing table melted down the side of the wall and onto the floor. The whole ceiling is black, light fixtures were melted, everything scorched. But the amazing thing, so someone called it in. Officer Miller has the name, a couple of names from 911. He's gonna, he's gonna contact them to see, you know, if he can get any further details out of them. The fire department arrived quickly, put the fire out very quickly, and cut the bolt on the sliding door because, and rightly so, you know, because they wanted to go in the barn, right? To make sure there was no fire. Didn't realize that we have built a building inside of a building. Remember when we did those bathrooms? And so that's what contained it. Our building inside of a building is what contained it. That's not the reason we built it that way, but that's what happened. The other three bathrooms, this one is destroyed and the other three are fine.
I thought we locked those at night.
But this, all this vandalism is happening during the day.
During the day?
It's all happening during the day. They are locked at night. So it's all happening in broad daylight.
So what hours are they open?
They're open from six, seven, six or seven to like right now, they're open at nine. But this happened, this fire happened at, I'm confused. It either happened at 1:00 in the afternoon or 3:00 in the afternoon. 3:00? Okay, wow. Because I think Bo called me at 3:30. I thought it had been a while. But so, it's, they're not happening late at night. This stuff is all happening during the day. So as a result of that, oh, oh, and so when the firemen went in the barn, they also just cut the power, turned the power off to the whole barn, which they didn't realize also cut the power to our EV chargers. So those went down at the same time, and that took us a minute to realize that. But we couldn't turn them back on until we had, we couldn't turn the power back on. So this happened on Saturday. So the EV chargers and the bathrooms were down Saturday afternoon, all day Sunday. Monday morning, we had to wait for a fire investigator from Central Wyby Fire District. So they came out. Bo didn't want us to open anything or touch anything until that happened. So they came out, got the information they need for their report. And then Jesse cut all the, any electric wire that was going to the, to the bad bathroom, to the destroyed bathroom, and was able to safely turn on the power again, which, you know, I didn't know if the EV chargers were gonna need reprogramming or anything, but they turned back on and are working. New lock on the door. So it was, we didn't lose the historic Holbrook Barn. We didn't lose the other three bathrooms. I mean, for how, for how total this one restroom is, is really an amazing, good news story. It's sad that we've got somebody in our community that's doing that, and we don't know why. So we are now putting up cameras, two in the, two in the public. We're still having to figure out what to do about all the notification and all the laws. But we're gonna put one facing the bathroom and one facing the parking lot. So, you know, this person doesn't move to prowling cars instead of restaurants or something. I don't know. So that's the story. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, do we, it says person gonna move up to the park because it's not very far to go. And then we have kitchen there, and we have new bathrooms there too.
We'll do bathroom, we'll do some cameras there also.
We see people like that, like move along.
Yeah, I told, I told Joe that we need cameras for the bathrooms and the kitchen and the pavilion in town park. I didn't tell him, we might as well do the bathrooms and the boat wash at the same time, yeah. Oh. That's interesting. There's cameras everywhere. Can I say about the Teslas? Can I tell them about the Teslas? So, did you guys know that Teslas have cameras all around them? Oh, see, some people know this and I don't know this. There were two Teslas parked in the parking lot while this was happening. So we are trying to contact, we have their license numbers, we have their license numbers. They weren't on the, were they on the chargers? They were just parked.
They were just parked there.
Just parked separately. So we have no idea whether anybody will give us this information, but we're gonna try and see if there's a way to track down these two owners of the Teslas and see if there's any video on that. But the part, but the post office, that's a good idea. They could very, very easily have cameras.
The way the things that they put.
That's a good one. Okay, so that's, that's all on that? You guys are all good? Okay, what? I said not good, not good, but you're informed, you're informed? Okay. Okay, so before we meet again, I want to remind you that this weekend is the biggest and best garage sale in our world, as their poster says. The Coopville Lions are having their traditional, I mean, I think this is their 35th or 40th year of doing this garage sale. They work on it all year long. They collect and collect items and work on it all year long. It takes the club two weeks to move everything over and get it all set up and get it all priced. And so the preview is Sunday, Friday from 3:00 to 6:00. You can go, can't touch anything, but you can go check things out, see what you want to be there at 7:00. It starts at 9:00 on Saturday, but, you know, people, people get their lineup at 7:00 or 8:00. And then when the bell rings, they run, run to the thing that they want. So Saturday, the hours are 9:00 to 4:00. And then Sunday is half-price Sunday. They're only open 9:00 to noon, because then we have to completely clean up everything and get out of school that day. A lot of work. And all the funds raised at this garage sale is what supports the Lions' service work all year long. And we are a big club and we do a lot of service work.
I recognize this. I need you all to get out of my way because I need to purchase back a chair that I accidentally donated to this sale.
Oh, no!
So I will be high-tailing it out there to get my chair back.
If we raise your price up.
I feel a little like, Rick, I, I, you can buy it back, I thought.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, a reminder that fireworks are allowed in Coopville only on the 4th of July from 9:00 to 11:00. We, and then remind you all that Town Hall will be closed on Tuesday, the 4th of July. And so most of the staff will have a holiday. Of course, you know, we've got Public Works people that have to come in seven days a week, so they will be working on the holiday, but Town Hall will be closed. So that is the end of my measure for. Is there any questions? Okay.
Which is the thing we were supposed to dump the alley down?
The easements?
Oh.
Well, I had already known. I already knew when I.
Yeah, I already told you that.
Yeah. Okay, this is our opportunity for audience input. If any of you would like to take a couple of minutes to address the council about anything, this is your chance to do that. It's not generally a question and answer time, but we'd like to hear from you. If you have things that take longer than a couple of minutes, we appreciate you giving it to us in writing. John, come on, you wanna talk? I mean, I don't mean to call on you, but.
That's okay, it's fine. I'm John McGree, AIAM Toby's, on Front Street. And I have serious misgivings about Resolution 2305.
Just a minute, just a minute. Is your, is, is your microphone on? We can barely hear you. And if we can barely hear you, I think that means that, that you won't be heard on the recording. Okay, put, hold it, push it up higher. There you go.
As long as I don't have to sing. Oh. Is it working?
It's a little tiny bit. So speak up if you can.
So I have, I'm John McGree, AIAM Toby's, 8 Front Street. I've been there a long time, but we had a two-way street the whole time. And it's something I can't see that we could easily change. The issue first is, it's not so much parking. I think there are some other options for parking. But mostly access and access by vendors. We get a lot of deliveries, probably 10 or 12 a week. There are always other merchants that have deliveries at the same time. We have, I've seen four or five or six delivery semis on the street. At one time, there's no real provision for taking care of that. I don't know how we would be able to make that work or how that wouldn't affect our survival. I think there could be some more thought. I'm a little astonished that I haven't been notified as an adjacent property owner for this situation. Maybe it happened, I just missed it, but I don't think so. So.
Are you a member of the Chamber of Coopville Historic Waterfront Association?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
Then you missed it, because they put out a ton of stuff on this. And we had special meetings just for this and chamber meetings and, yeah. It's been going on for months.
Yeah, I'm sure it has.
And we got, actually got a lot of great input from, from business owners that we incorporated into the plan.
Yeah, well, I think perhaps it should have been addressed directly to the property owners, and I don't see that that's happened. And that has happened in the past where there's been specific property owners singled out because they were adjacent to whatever changes were being made. So, you know, Front Streets worked fine for a long time. I think if you make a change, it's going to negatively affect it. I think it'll channel traffic away from the business area and it'll suck.
Okay, so I know I said this wasn't question and answer, but I do respect your opinion as one of the longest time business owners on the street. So I have to ask you a question, John. Deliveries. Right now, every delivery truck for every business parks illegally, smack dab in the middle of the road. So why can't they still do that? That's what people do. That's what they'll do. They'll just park and stop in the middle of the road like they do now.
You have one, one spot that's considered loading zone. And that's right in front of the new guy.
No, it's in the center. It's right in front of Gray Street. Straight from Gray Street.
Yeah, so it's, it's right in front of the hotel.
And honestly, honestly, we have the room to do that now. And so we did, we only have the room to do that with not parking on the other side of the road. And we see that that's a open space and a handicap space. But do I think all the drivers are gonna stop there? No, because they all park illegally in the middle of the road right now.
Well, or, or in the parking side if they're early. So that happens a lot.
Yeah.
And if you have no parking on that side of the street, the north side of the street, they're gonna take that up. So, I just think it's, it's not gonna work.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you, we appreciate you coming here and letting us know your feelings. Anybody else that would like to have a question? George Lloyd.
Hello, my name's George Lloyd. I've been a business owner on Front Street since 1983, so that's 40 years so far. And I'm also concerned about the notice to merchants and the property owners about this program. I haven't seen any notifications. I've looked through my emails and I don't know where they are. And I'm a paid-up member of the Historic Waterfront Association, so obviously there's been some kind of loss and whatever there. But I'm concerned about the parking on that side of the street, on the south side of the street, because there's no parking blocks there and no stops that are required by law. The front end of the car will extend onto a 63-inch sidewalk that is just barely the 60-inch standard by the state of Washington, making it about 36 inches, which is an illegal sidewalk for access. And if the sidewalk is that narrow, for ADA, there's required to be a bypass every 200 feet for those ADA, using the ADA spaces. Furthermore, 60 spaces or more than 51 spaces, parking spaces, requires three ADA parking spaces, not two as provided. Furthermore, if there's a delivery truck taking up the delivery area and a delivery truck is illegally parked, which I guess will be allowed in the one lane to deliver something, then that will slow down traffic for the whole street. And I believe that that is going to cause some real problems in traffic flow in the area. And I also believe that the point of this whole thing is to direct traffic out into other areas of the city and to provide commercial building in other areas of the city. We have a good gig going on Front Street. We've paid a lot of taxes over the years, and I believe that should continue. So I don't care if you built a lot of piece of property in other part of town. You should have bought one on Front Street. Okay? The subsidence of Front Street on the north side of the street, it's obviously sinking. So we're gonna put moving and heavy traffic on that side of the street. I'm sure that's gonna have some future problem that's gonna have to be taken care of. And, you know, there's also, when you look at the map and you're coming down Front Street, there is a, the spaces on Main Street are what? Back end, up the hill? We have them back end, up the hill spaces, okay. So if someone pulls into those, they would obviously be going the wrong way. If they pulled out and they had pulled in frontwards. If they somehow managed to pull in at an oblique angle, then they would, when they pulled out, they would be facing the wrong way in a one-way street. Washington requires diagonal parking to be 60 degrees, and our diagonal parking is 70 degrees. For a 60-degree angle parking space, the Washington DOT requires a nine-foot space for a 60-degree angle. For 70 degrees, I would think that the width would have to be over 90, because eight and a half feet is only allowed in park and ride lots. And so how wide are these spaces? We're getting more spaces by making them smaller and understand, but just how wide are they? They're not, it's not specified. Everyone assures me that I voted for this by proxy, but I hadn't. And everyone assures me there's been at least three engineering studies. I don't believe that that's true, and I would like to see those three engineering studies. And I would also like to see the engineering studies that show that emergency vehicles can make those corners and access Front Street. Since Gray Street is now closed on, I don't know what kind of access the emergency vehicles have to the fire hydrant in front of Gray Street, but that, that inability to access that area will undoubtedly have some issues with fire insurance for commercial buildings in that area. I just think this is a neophyte program that's not quite right. The drawing that I got in my utility bill looks like it was drawn with a sharp. Is that the engineering study? Is that one of them, or?
That's one of them.
Well, that's one of the engineering studies? This is how the engineers draw out your study? What company did this?
It's a, it's a, it's a visual aid.
Did some engineers draw that out is the question?
Yes.
They did. And who was that engineer?
Harmson. Harmson.
Okay, and so this is Harmson. If I go to them, they'll tell me, yes, they drew this.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I still think that this is not a, I think this is a neophyte program at the height of the season. It's going to cost some major money and destroy business on that side of the street. Car doors open backwards to the north. That will direct people to the other side of the street. And the, the buildings on the, on the, on the buildings on the south side of the street will be actually having a three. will be actually having a three-foot or less sidewalk. So I don't really see, without any kind of protection, if someone actually accidentally runs up on the sidewalk, they're going to get a historic building. But we haven't made any plans for that. That doesn't seem like that's some kind of engineering plan by Harmson. But, you know, they've done work for me before. I can't imagine that that's the thing. So I'm opposed to it, if you might guess. Thanks, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council about this or any other subject? Do we have anybody online, Jen?
Yeah, we have quite a few online. I am going to go ahead and unmute. If you would like to address the council, feel free to do so now. You will have to also unmute yourself on your side.
Can we see them?
Nobody has their cameras on.
Does they turn them on or you turn them on?
Nope, they turned them off.
Hi, can you see me?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Can you hear us?
I can.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Mayor, Town Council. Thank you all for giving us the time today. My name is Michelle Casapula. I'm project manager for Phoenix Tower International. And we're here to talk to you today about the proposal for the new tower that the mayor has talked to you about in the past.
Jen, could you tell her that she's muted?
Michelle, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes. Michelle, this is audience input. We are not ready for your presentation yet. You're going to be next after, after, anybody that would wish to speak to the council gets a chance to do that about any subject. And so when, so when you're next, you're next on the agenda after audience input is over, and then I'll call on you, okay?
Okay, sorry, thank you.
It's okay. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the council about any other issue, about Front Street or any other issue, on or off the agenda?
They unmuted, Jen. They, yeah, so you will have to unmute yourself, but you have the option to be able to do that now.
If you would like to speak to the council, unmute yourself and just go ahead and start talking. We'll give it a couple more minutes here. We are at the disadvantage that you all have your cameras off, so I can't see if anybody's waving at us or trying to get our attention. Okay, is that good? Okay, so I, okay, so I guess I'm going to end the audience input for this meeting. Thank you all who have spoken and who have come to the meeting. Okay, now, Michelle, I'm sorry. Now I want you to go ahead and start your presentation. This is Michelle from Phoenix Tower. We've been talking back and forth with Phoenix Tower about the possibility of expanding our, they want to expand their lease area for the one-cell tower in town. We've gone back and forth on this subject and discussed it with the council before. They have a new presentation that they wanted to come and speak directly to the council about. You all have their simulated photos of, or drawings of their proposal. Okay, Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Town Council and everybody from the town who's here today. My name's Michelle Casapula. I'm a project manager at Phoenix Tower. Thank you for giving me a few minutes today of your time. Also with me today is Luisa Almonte, your asset manager, and also TJ Elwell, who's here with me to answer any of your questions that may come up. As the mayor has said, she has brought forth to you our previous proposals. Thank you for that. And we have revised that proposal now, and I am going to present that to you. If you'd like to pull up the photos, Jen, to share them with everyone, or I can do that. I'm not sure which is easier.
Why don't you go ahead? I will go ahead and make you a presenter.
Did you read her presenter when she, that's, that's mine.
These are our new proposed drawings here. So before I flip the page, or I'll just flip it, actually. Here on the screen now is your current tower, which is 48 feet in height and is a stealth canister design, which means that all the antennas are inside the enclosed tube. The original proposal that the mayor presented to you was for an 80-foot tower that looked like a pine tree. And we were told that this was not looked well upon by the members of the council. So now we are proposing to you a 62-foot monopine. It looks, I'm sorry, a monopole that looks painted blue-gray to camouflage with the surrounding sky. This is only 62 feet in height, so we are reducing our original proposal by 18 feet to help align with the city view shed and your historical nature of the town. There are also two other objects that are visible in the sky. The existing radio tower over here and your existing steeple. And you have this one tall tree in the area. So we feel that we're now closer in height to these objects that are in the surrounding area. Here's a couple of other views of your existing tower. And then this would be the new tower. And we have one more of your existing tower here, steeple, and the new tower, steeple. Does anybody have any questions before I move on a little bit and explain a little bit more?
Say again, tell me one more time how tall these new pictures are. How tall is this tower?
This new proposed tower is 62 feet in height. And our original proposal was for 80 feet. So we're coming down 18 feet. So as I mentioned, your existing tower is a stealth canister. And this means that the antennas are inside and they're concealed. Now we're proposing to have the antennas outside and visible. This is definitely different than what you are used to. But the reason is that this flush, the antennas concealed is not going to work for adding a new tenant at this location. If we want to increase the town's coverage and capacity for new tenants, then we have to have the full view here that we're showing. The existing tower that you have now cannot structurally support any additional tenants. It can only support the existing tenant now, which is T-Mobile. And if they were to modify and upgrade only T-Mobile, it would increase the circumference of the tower, I think significantly, because of the weight and size of the new equipment that is available in today's market. So adding a new carrier with these two antenna arrays showing, the top level would be one carrier and the lower level would be a second carrier. So adding a new carrier is going to provide more flexibility for the town, the citizens, its businesses. You're basically going to have more bandwidth, more coverage. You'll be able to have cell phone calls in places where you weren't having them before. And they're going to work faster and better. The monopole is definitely the preferred design for carriers today still, especially in locations like this. I know that you guys are kind of interested in small cell and DOS, but that is really for inside, like hospitals, arenas, places where there's high traffic all the time and indoors mainly. To provide coverage to the town in an area like this, a monopole is what they're looking for with this full array, the antennas showing, and they're looking for height, generally as much height as they can get. That's why we are proposing this type of design at this time. Anybody have any questions at this time?
The question that I have is, you give the dimensions, you give the height of 62 feet. What are the dimensions of the exterior antennas? What's their span?
The antennas are about six to eight feet in height and they, the T-arms. TJ, do you know exactly how far off the mounts they would be?
Yeah, usually they'll be like from the pole, you know, it'd be like three to four feet extruding from the pole. Usually use like triangle-shaped mounting platforms.
What is the total width that it extends out on both sides of the pole?
Yeah, we could, we could figure out the exact dimensions, but it's basically like a 10-foot triangle. Like the triangles, each side of the triangle is like 10 feet. So maybe at the corners, it's four to five feet sticking off. And then like on the face of it, the mount, it's three to four feet. I'd be able to maybe find a dimension there with our A and E to get the exact number.
I have a question for you in regards to the, I don't know what you properly call those pieces, I guess.
That's the antennas.
The antennas that are out there. So there's X amount of antennas that circle around. You said there are the primary ones on the top and secondary ones on the bottom. So are these leased to different phone companies? Or how many of those are on there? Are you going to expand those or how does that work? I mean, each one of those things must be for some different company or something.
Sure, yeah. So each level is a different company. So this top level would be all antennas pertaining to one carrier, one phone company. And the next level would be all antennas pertaining to a second carrier company. Each side of the antenna is just shooting a different direction, covering a 360-degree circle around the tower for coverage. So typically, I mean, not typically. How it works is each carrier will lease a 10-foot section of the height of the tower. And they will have lease rights to that 10-foot section. And they will, I mean, in this initial lease, they have proposed the design. So they will have lease rights to like, let's say, three antennas and three RRUs up there. And I understand that your lease existing now is very old. And I would encourage you, if you are interested in this proposal, to request from Luisa an updated draft to review. Because in it, you'll see that you will have more rights to, so that the tenant won't be able to modify what's up there without you guys reviewing and agreeing to such modification. So at this time, the lease will say they want three antennas and three RRUs. And if they wanted to change it to four antennas or five antennas, per your lease rights in the newer updated lease, we would have to come to you and show you the drawings and show you everything you wanted to see. And you would have to agree in writing, signing, new amendment, however you choose to draw it up for any changes to happen. And that goes for both the tower and the ground.
So I have one more question. There's a, there's a tower, there are cell towers on the north end of the highway, about a mile north on Highway 20. And there's also ones on the south at Morris Road. Does this make those two obsolete? Or are the distances of these only about a mile?
Yeah, each, each tower only covers a certain area. The antennas are directional. So whatever direction the antennas are pointing is the coverage area. So multiple towers are needed in areas in order to provide coverage from, you know, all angles and cover all different parts of the, of the land. So they'll, and also, not every, like, phone, phone carrier is on every tower. So there's, there's a lot of different towers, but it might not have, you know, all the different carriers on them.
How many carriers could be on what you're proposing to us? Is it limited to two?
Currently limited to two. I mean, maybe I, we could design the tower to handle a little extra loading and we possibly could sneak a third carrier in underneath. Maybe not a full array, but like stealth, I mean, close, flush mounted to the pole. But I would have to check like the RF emissions and everything because, you know, your roof is right there and so it is a concern. I could look into it, but more height is better for more carriers.
Do you currently have a 62-foot monopole with exterior antennas installed somewhere? These proposals are, you know, they're schematic, so we're not really seeing it in actuality. And the perspective is a little interesting when you're looking at the steeple. And do you have one that's currently installed somewhere that we could see photos of or online or something?
Of a 62-foot monopole that looks like this?
Uh huh, yeah.
I would have to look it up. We probably have something somewhere, but I'm, I don't know off the top of my head which one that would be. But I can come back to you with that.
Yeah, I'm sure there's like examples of, of a cell tower that we can, that I could try to look up for some pictures. Might not be exactly the same height or anything, but it could be kind of what a cell tower looks like in general.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have other towers on Wiby Island?
I don't think so. This is PTI's only owned asset in this location.
Right, there are other towers on Wiby Island, but I don't think there's other Phoenix Tower, Towers.
One question. Does, does the owner of the lease, I don't have a preference, but I'm just curious. So T-Mobile is on it now. It sounds like you keep T-Mobile. Does the town have any input on what the next, the second carrier would be? Or is that just strictly up to Phoenix Tower?
It's actually up to the carriers to show interest in a location. We can reach out to all the carriers to see if they are potentially interested in the location. And we do generally do that if we're going to build a tower that can handle more, more tenants. Is there a particular carrier that the town would like to see?
Oh, no. I mean, I'm not going to speak for the town. I was just curious if that's, we would have to talk about it, but it is.
Yeah, no, it's up to them. I mean, they really decide where they need, where they have coverage gaps and then they tell us and we try to help them fill those gaps.
I just would like to see more information on the technicalities and if it's definitely if we're talking about 40-year leases.
Yeah, I don't mind you. You're still not doing 40-year leases, are you?
Luisa, can you speak more to our typical lease terms? No? Can't hear you.
She's unmuted.
But on her side.
Yeah. I think we more are like 25 is, 25 to 30-year, I think, is more typical at this time. Yeah, she thumbs up. But again, there's like renewal terms. The lease is definitely significantly updated in everyone's favor than what you have existing. I know it's very old, and it's, it's a completely different document.
Okay. Yeah, we were, I wasn't bringing this to you to make a decision tonight. Just, we, you, we said it was too, we turned down their offer because it was too tall and too big around and had too much stuff on the top of it, and we didn't like the fake tree. And so they came back with these pictures, so I'm just, I'm showing them to you. We also asked them to consider a different location up by the water towers, and I believe they're still working on that.
Yes, correct. We are still looking into that.
Okay, so this was?
Sorry, I was just going to say that we need to, we need to just do kind of like feasibility reviews of that alternate location, and, and then we would have to present that to the R F engineers to confirm if they would, if that area or new area would work for their coverage needs.
Okay, and I know that Joe Rogan has sent them drawings and some information about the area out there, and they were talking about, Phoenix Towers talking about sending out a drone to measure the tree line and how that would work and stuff, so feasibility. So I expect that we will be hearing back from you again.
Yes, absolutely. And I, you did get Luisa's email earlier today with her revised offer, correct, Mayor?
Yes, I did. So your original 80, you offered the town an additional $250 a month, and now you're offering an additional $1,000 a month on top of our current leases?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, thank you for that information.
No problem. Thank you. I appreciate you guys letting us speak today and taking the time to hear us out, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, if we, I think I've, I know I've told you this before, if we do something, if we consider doing something like this, it's going to need a public process, and it's going to need to go through design review, because we're very, we have a very robust design review process in our historic town in the middle of a historic reserve. So there, there's, you know, steps to go through, but I just wanted to show, you made a new, you made a new offer, so I just wanted to share it with the council. So I thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome to stay with us, but feelings won't be hurt if you leave.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, so it's just a presentation. So let's, we have three items of new business. We have, the first one is, you remember when Jen gave her presentation about new software? And she said that, that Donna and her crew, Donna and Scott and Joshua and Courtney, were going to be having a presentation on permitting software? So they have that. They're really excited. Donna is online, I think Donna is online with us. Is Donna still there?
Yes, she is.
Okay, she has provided a, a staff report and a copy of the contract, and we asked Jenny, Councilman Wright, who this is her area of expertise, she came in and looked over the contract for us in great detail, and we appreciate that. She had a couple of questions that she got answered, and Donna, would you like to say a little bit more about the, the software and the presentation you have?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. We're just very excited about this. So SmartGov is used by the county and has been used by the county for quite a few years, and the beauty, the beauty about this is that, sorry, I'm hearing an echo, but applicants will have the ability to get on a portal and submit an application online. So currently, what they have to do is get onto our website, pull a PDF, fill it out, scan it, and then email it back to us. So this will really facilitate permit submittal by applicants, and they'll also be able to pay online through credit card, which is amazing, because right now they pay by check or cash only. And, and then it also creates kind of a workflow system for us, so that we're compliant with state regulations in terms of how much time we spend on a permit. Under state law, we have to make a decision on a permit within 120 days. So it starts and stops a clock for us, like if we return an application or if we need more information, it will automatically stop the clock. And so it will help us, keep us in compliance with state law, and also help us review permits faster and share information amongst each other. So right now, when I get an application or when Joshua gets it, we all get a copy of it, but we kind of have to reach out to everybody, saying, hey, do you have any comments on this? And this, so this way, we'll be able to, through the system, Joe will be able to look at it, and he will have his time, a timeline for his comments when they're due, and so will Joshua and, and Scott. And also, I think it'll be providing more transparency, because applicants will be able to get on the portal and see where in the process their application is. So very excited about this, and Jen did a great job bringing the price down, and she was able to negotiate almost another $5,000 discount, and I think it's going to be money well spent. Do you have any questions?
And if you remember, Jen had reported last time that if Donna liked this, if the building, if our planning and building department likes SmartGov, we know that it interfaces with the Springbrook stuff, the software that we've already purchased.
And Express Bill Pay.
And Express Bill Pay. Everything works together. So no more, is there any questions for Donna? Okay, Donna's in a hotel room in Port Townsend. Thank you for joining us. Missing her dinner. Does anybody have, want to make a motion for this contract?
I'd like to authorize the mayor to sign a five-year contract with Brightly for procurement of SmartGov, new software, contract with PTI position, invitation, training, and service of new software, and will not exceed $27,548 in maintenance and plus tax for the initial investment in purchase description. I second.
Moved and seconded to signify your contract with Brightly for permitting software. Any further questions or discussion? I want to thank Jen for setting this up, and Donna's group for, for scoping it out, and there was a lot of people involved, and we feel really good about all these software decisions. Everybody that uses it has been included in the purchasing decisions. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations, I should say.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item of new business is approval of Resolution 2305. So let me just explain this. This is the, I was talking to our town attorney, and I said, you know, we've been talking about doing this forever. It's been vetted publicly. It's been discussed in numerous meetings, at numerous organizations, but, but we haven't taken formal action. And I said, you remember when we changed Gray Street a little bit, and we had to do an ordinance to include it in our code, and we were changing the one-way status? That section of our code is this big, because it includes part of Front Street and part of Gray Street. And in the meantime, we've been having issues with community code. That'll be something we discuss with you next time, later. But a paper came out from MRSC, and it was just like, it was just a code, on code, saying, this is what you should have in your, here's some ideas of things you should make sure you have in your code. Here are some ideas that are in people's codes and they really shouldn't be, because they change all the time, and that's not appropriate place. One of them, what they spelled out, was one-way streets and traffic revisions. So I talked to Nikki about that. I talked to our town attorney about that, and I said, so what I'd like to do is really bring an ordinance to the county, town council, just suggesting we take that little tiny section out of our code. And, and Nikki said, that's what you should do. She, we'll have that ready for the next, the next meeting, but she suggested, says this is a big deal, that we, that you take formal action on just this, this traffic revision. So it won't really necessarily be in our code, but it will be a formal record of what we're doing and why. So that's why this is here today. So this is Resolution 2305, and it's basically talking about changing the last block of North Main Street and two blocks of Front Street, and one block of Alexander Street, a loop all the way around our historic commercial business district to one-way, changing parallel parking to Amelin parking, creating more handicap spots, a loading zone, a loading zone, a loading area, a pedestrian drop-off and pickup area. And also, at, at the same time we're doing this traffic revision, doing a four-way stop sign, which our residents and our businesses have been asking us about for a long time at the intersection of Coblen and Alexander. I will just point out, since we have that public input, that this entire plan has been vetted, not once, but twice, by the Central Wiby Fire District, to make sure that there's enough room for first responders and everything. We had it vetted by, by Chief Harden, and then he left, and so we went ahead and brought the new chief, Jerry Holmes, into the, into the picture, and he approved it again. I mean, that tells you how long we've been talking about this and doing this. To say that this is quickly done and being rushed is just, could not be further from the truth. I think that's it. That's kind of the big changes, right? Of course, you guys know all this, because we've discussed it several times. Does anybody want to make a motion, or do you have any questions?
I just have a question. I'm not, I'll make a motion to approve it, but I just, if you're listening to the input tonight, I, one thing I'm not clear on from what they were talking about was how, how is it going to be any worse for them under the new proposed way than it is now? I mean, if, if emergency vehicles would have problems under the new one, then would have problems under the existing one, it seems to me. Maybe I'm missing something.
That, that's just a thought, and maybe that will happen. Our first responders get around our downtown area fine. Closing that little portion of Gray Street, we took that to the fire station, to the fire department, as you know. Before we did that, to me, that could have been a bigger issue. But it was such a little area we were closing, that the fire trucks could go all the way down to it and hit all the buildings from the back, and they could hit all the buildings from the front on Front Street, so they were fine with it. Oh, what?
Joe has a comment about your discussion.
Joseph, Joe, go ahead.
Oh, so I just wanted to confirm that I did bring the, an actual response vehicle, one of their larger response vehicles down to verify access and to just get their approval on, on this change. We did, we did pull in a fire truck to both fire hydrants. We did the loop. It was, it was a good exercise.
Thank you. Thanks for letting, letting us know that. The, the comments about the 60-degree versus 70-degree angle, Joe himself had some questions about that. We could do it either way. I will say that all the spaces meet the town's parking space standards, which are kind of old and big. We're not, we're not putting in any compact spaces, spaces down there. And I just want to, I, I don't know what that was about moving business to a different part of town. I don't know what that was about. And the cost, it costs too much.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. Another response on that was, we're actually gaining a handicap spot.
He, if he, I don't, you know, he may be right that for a certain number of spots, you have to have a certain number of handicap. That is, this is the historic commercial district, which is exempt from the 80-year requirements. Now, not that we take that lightly, so there's one space down there now. We're going to have two now, plus a pedestrian drop-off and pickup location. So I think that's a big improvement to the area. We're gaining parking spaces, not losing parking spaces. Did you understand what the question was about back-end angle parking on Main? You didn't understand that? Or you didn't? That is, that is going to be interesting. So right now, as a two-way, you can come south on Main and pull nose-first into those parking spaces next to the McPherson's Building. And then you would back up to get out of them. So we were going to change the direction. It made us lose a lot of parking spaces, and it was clunky, because there's an island down there, and they were going to be hard spaces to, to physically get in and out of your car. And then we realized, hey, no matter what direction they are, you're going to be backing up into traffic. Either you're backing up into traffic when you're parking, or when you're leaving the parking space. So either way, that's going to, that's going to be happening, which it does right now. You're backing on the two-way, when you're pulling out of those parking spaces, you're backing, back down towards Front Street. Somebody could be coming around that corner. I'm not aware of any accidents we've had. It's, it's a valid point. We will have to watch it and see, and, you know, see how it goes.
I think I've heard a couple of comments from folks saying, well, why can't we do that when Anacortes doesn't, and they can back, back in spaces, you know, down Front Street or something? And what they don't realize is that Anacortes streets are about twice as wide as the downtown one.
And their sidewalks.
And you can still back down and, and out, and Anacortes was not affecting the traffic law and the office of, we tried to do that in town to block everything away. So I think that Anacortes is a, you know.
And I think, I think Joe actually might have looked at some back-end spaces, too. Didn't that been Oak Harbor? Joe, did you do that?
Yes, both Oak Harbor and Anacortes. And to be honest with you, I have witnessed many times that they're backing into the spaces now against traffic. At, at the, on the Main Street parking that we're talking about. If anybody else has witnessed that, but you see cars backed into those spaces against traffic.
You mean into regular spaces? Into pole-in spaces? Oh, they, oh, okay. You're saying that in the spaces next to the McPherson's, people do back into those?
Correct. Yes, indeed.
Okay. Okay. They're doing that, they're crossing a lane of traffic to do that, too, so. Okay. I just really, I am sorry, I'm truly sorry if there is our businesses that do not feel that they were contacted. I should be, full disclosure, I got a, I got a phone call from another business owner, owner Brenda Marty, who owns Sunshine River, and she also owns the Blossom, Magnolia Blossom, down on Front Street. And she, you know, wrote me an email and said all this stuff. And so I've known Brenda for 25 years, so I answered her back. And, you know, just, she said that there was no notification, and I, I just really feel like if you're not a member of the Chamber, or a member of Kukulah Historic Waterfront Association, or you don't intend special meetings that we hold, you have to take, you know, I've said this before, I, I think everybody, residents or business owners, have to take some responsibility for getting their information. And we tried really hard, and for a long, long time, to get this information out. I know that we had, also had Chamber, the Chamber Director and the Chua Director up and down the street, talking to specific business owners. I wonder, though, I said that to Brenda, and as I was saying that, I'm thinking, okay, I wonder, though, I said that to Brenda, and as I was saying that, I'm thinking, okay, it's possible they could have gone in and talked to one of Brenda's employees, and that employee maybe not passed that information. So, that, I want to say that is possible. But the, I can tell you without a doubt, the vast majority of businesses in that area are excited about this change. And as I said, it's a, it's a paint and sign. It's a paint and sign job. It's, it's not going to cost a lot to do it. It's going to be a, a big change for relatively no money. And, and I will say, I get, I get George's, because this, I don't know that this information has gone out yet, Joe. I get George's concern that this is happening in the summer. I have that same concern. Joe has the same concern. Joe, are you still planning to have your crew work at night?
Yes. Yes, so the signage and painting will be done at night, and it'll be a one-day changeover.
So, they're going to, they're going to work through tonight so that it doesn't, so the street is not closed at all for the, for the businesses. We are contracting with the county to seal Front and Alexander before we do this striping. I, I don't believe that will be done during the night, but Joe has said that that's a pretty, they lay that down and you can drive on it really quickly. Is that right, Joe?
Yes. I've been told within 15 minutes.
And also, I mean, you have to do maintenance on those streets anyway, so you have to close them down for some amount of time for this to off.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Probably do it July, I don't know. So, Joe, stay away from Fourth of July weekend, and right now, he's ready to go. Him and his staff are ready to go. We're kind of waiting on the county, because they're actually going to do the work. And so, as soon, I have told the Chamber and the Cucul historic Waterfront Association that the minute we find out when this is going to happen, we're going to inform them.
I don't, I don't think it's going to affect our tourists, and it, I think it might affect the employees of what department down town.
And it will affect the locals. I mean, the biggest people that this will be a change for is the people that live here and are, you know, used to driving it. The tourists are going to come in and think this is the way it's always been, right? Yeah.
I do have one comment, and it's not a requirement whatsoever, but in the future, we might think about, if we're doing something like this, of sending a, a letter to the area after that, just as a courtesy.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But, on the other hand, we've had this on our agenda through the years, and I do have heard folks discussing it now on the businesses down there, somewhere it's around. It's been on the street for a long time.
For a long time. Okay, does anybody want to make a res- a resolution? Make, make a motion? Or have any other questions?
Uh, Mayor, I've moved to approve Resolution Number 23-05, creating one-way traffic and angled parking on sections of North Main Street, Northwest Front Street, Northwest Alexander Streets, and creating a four-way stop at the intersections of Southwest Cobland and Northwest Alexander Streets.
I second. Okay, move in second to make the traffic revisions note, as noted in Resolution 2305. Last chance for questions or comments. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Oh, Jen's opposed. So, three yeses, one no. Thank you, Joe. Okay, the next, the next item on our agenda is approving the May 2023 payroll and the June 2023 AP.
Okay. I mean, what? They're both June.
Oh, it says May on the agenda. Okay, but it doesn't, but it says the correct on, on your motion. Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 2023 payroll transaction vouchers Number 37448, the Number 37453, the Number 37520, the Number 37527, and the Number 37531, and the FMT payments as attached for a total of $156,910.14. And June 2023 attached payment transaction vouchers Number 37484 to Number 37519, the Number 37528, the Number 37530, the Number 37532, the Number 37534, and the FMT payments as attached for a total of $107,255.29.
Sorry. Move in second to pay the June, and the June payroll and AP transactions. I am really sorry for that chopped up, chopped up, this number to this number. We, our, our motion is not normally like that. I will admit that we have written some checks pronto, when those easements came in.
Yeah.
We paid, paid the person for the easement and paid the recording fees to get that done. And so, hopefully, that we don't, I hope that doesn't, it's not choppy like this again. But that's the reason why it's like that. Okay, any questions on the payroll or AP?
No questions.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Asks unanimously. Okay, next thing on our agenda is council reports. Michael, do you have any council report?
No.
Pat? No. Rick?
Uh, yes, briefly, we have a long, lengthy meeting, but it wasn't brief.
Who?
On June 22nd, and basically, I might have an ash, or like a squat. Anyway, the female water line project is at final stages with a final block where we will have a close-out meeting. That's the water line that goes down by Fort Casey. David O. is finishing up with the water plant. It goes to the state, and then to a hearing, and finally to the council for review, so far as, so far the plant is still. And this is what I might think I want to add. The Navy status of Operation in Maine is for water plants, and they were, with changes where they're agreement, etc., away. And this is for the, for the, okay. You want me to repeat it? Anyway, I was just, the Navy status on Operation, the payments for the water plants, and they were for changes for agreement, etc., away. But, you know, for the water plant?
Ready, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we've already signed it.
Okay.
I think we've already brought it to council.
Okay. Well, we don't talk about it in the meeting yet. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anyway, strike that one.
Okay.
That's why I think it, okay. And we're still waiting for an election, but they had work stopped in hopes. That's water treatment plant. And the last item is utility code changes for consideration, but that's a long one. I'll turn that over to Mayor.
Well, that's going to be one of our discussion items.
Yeah.
That is why the meeting went so long, though.
Yes.
I might suggest that you give thought to them, and just talk about that. I would suggest you have a.
Okay, Jen, Jenny, do you have a report? No, you don't? Okay. Okay, so that's council report. So, we have two discussion items. The first one is, in your packet, you have almost a page worth of utility code changes that the staff has been wanting to do and been talking about for a long time. We've been keeping this long list, as you know, code changes that need to happen. And staff just doesn't have time to get, to make them happen. So, these utility codes that need to be changed keep coming up over and over again. So, I decided to, at this water meeting, I took every code that we had ever talked about changing, I decided to just do utility first, right? And we discussed them at length, to make sure we still wanted to recommend them to you, to fine-tune them. And my plan would be then to send them, I already contacted our attorney's office. They said they are, that's what they do. They can do our code and make sure that if they change something here in water, it's consistent with the rest of the water code. Check everything for consistency. But before I paid them, started paying them to do that, I, some, a couple of these, some of these are, are brand-new things, or, or kind of big changes. So, I want to make sure that the council was in agreement, basically, with these recommendations before we sent them to the attorney's office to start working on them. So, can I just run through them really quick? Okay, so the first ones are for water and sewer. Right now, you are only required to hook up to a sewer main within 500 feet of your property if you can do it without adding a sewer pump. In other words, if you can hook up, but your sewer line's going to be gravity, you have to do that. But if it's not gravity, you don't have to hook up. Joe feels really strongly about wanting to take the word "gravity" out of this code and just have it be that all, require all homes within 500 feet of a sewer line to hook up. And I have actually, that one, since that's existing code that we're changing, I, I added the, I mean, like, what I would, didn't I? Was that going in there?
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot that. Okay, anyway, that's basically the change to it. You guys good with that? Sound okay? Okay. We, okay, so the county requires annual septic inspections, but that program is not really being enforced. And so, we would like to add it to our code to just back up the county, saying that we also are going to require annual septic inspections on any septic systems within town limits. And then, then the owner has to supply, prove it to the town, that their system has passed, and if it doesn't pass, they must immediately hook up to sewer if there's a sewer line in front of them. If not, they have to make, they have to work with county public help to make the needed repairs to fix their septic system. So, this is just really, we can't really go out and enforce a county code, so we're putting it on our own code so that we can go out and enforce it.
I actually have a problem with that, and it's one of the reasons I, that I think the county isn't enforcing it. It was overkill for most people. Every year, I mean, the cost is pretty significant, and usually, they don't find anything. I think maybe if, you know, if they haven't had one, then everybody's got to get one within X amount of time, one year, you know, to get, catch them up. But then I think it depends on the kind of system they have, too. So, the devil's kind of in the details. Doing a septic inspection, we've been doing it, we were doing it in my prior job in a property we owned, and it was ludicrous. The guy's like, "Is anything in the last year?" Nothing. And, and it still cost us $500. So, I don't know. Have you talked to the health department about why they're not enforcing it? Because I, I think it's, some things need to be, but I think the county might be too much.
Okay, that's just my, Joe, Joe, I think you maybe even talked about that a little bit, not knowing it, but being, what do you think about that, Joe?
Well, the, the county just does not have the resources to enforce it. I'm, I'm suggesting that at least we can send a letter reminding them that they need to have their tank inspected, or their system inspected. And it really does not affect very many people in the town. We, we really don't have that many sewer or septic systems in the town. The ones we do have in the town are very subject to failure. They're typically on the beach.
Well, okay, I, I mean, how many septic systems do you think are within town?
I apologize, I do not have the exact number, but I can get that to you this week.
I, I believe that we know that we have nine systems, Joe, that are, that have a sewer line, that now have a town sewer line running in front of them. Is that, isn't that correct?
I believe that's correct. And the total number of septic systems, I, I believe it's in the 60s or 70s, but most of them are, do not have sewer available.
Wow, okay. You know, it was that many. Okay.
Would have to be every year?
Yeah, let's.
That is the county code for any modified system, which is pretty much all of the systems. Again, I, I can get you the actual numbers of, of systems.
But, I mean, I, I thought it was also every year for modified, and then for standard, it was every three years or something. I can't recall now, but.
Three years for gravity, but those systems, to be honest with you, those are pre-70s, so they're, they're probably failed.
They're probably what, Joe?
Uh, they're probably not in working condition.
Well, and I, my, my main concern are those systems that have never been inspected, some of which, back when they were installed, could have been standard, because I'll tell you, the health standards for septic's have gotten a lot better. So, a lot of the failing systems or too failed are ones that are not like the higher-end ones that are being put in. I, I just think, I think that they should all be tested. If they haven't been tested within a year, I'm not sure that it makes sense to test them every year after that. I mean.
Pat, what I'm, what I'm asking for is that we at least know that they're being tested, and we're not requiring them to hook up to sewer, even though there's a sewer line in front of their house. It's, it's.
You're not requiring it if they pass the inspection, but.
If they pass the inspection, we're not requiring them to hook up, even if there's sewer in front of their house.
Yes, but if they don't pass the inspection, then we would jump back to our original code, which we haven't been enforcing, to require them to hook up to septic if there's a line in front of, in front of them.
Correct.
That makes sense. Which I feel better about, that you're requiring that they don't pass and not just requiring everybody to do it. So, Joe, okay, what do you guys think? So, so, does everybody else not want to do an annual inspection? How do you guys feel about that?
I think it's all going to be back to it, yeah.
They don't have that much money? I did not know it was $500.
Well, it depends on the septic person, right? But I, I think that one of the things that maybe the town needs to do, even without the county, is to require everyone to have, you know, their septic inspected, so we have a baseline.
That's exactly what I'm asking for. Whether it be, I was just following county code for annual inspections for the alternative systems. We could put in their county code with standard systems at three years. That's, that's definitely doable.
It's, again, some of the standard systems might be the ones failing. I think, I think we're talking two things. I mean, we're talking of what we need to know, as I understand it, is we need to know what the state of everybody's septic system is soon. And then, the ones that are failing that are next to a sewer need to hook up. The ones that are failing that are next to a sewer need to fix it.
Right.
But we're going further beyond that and saying, everybody has to do it every year, and then you're going to, I hate to create code that you know you're not going to enforce. Are you going to check everybody every year to make sure that they're getting their septic inspected? I think we have a different problem. We need a baseline first.
So, that's what I was explaining to the mayor, was we currently send out a letter for Backflow Devices, let's say, that your Backflow device needs to be inspected every year. Compliance, I'll tell you, we don't get 100% compliance, but we do send out a letter to remind them that their inspection is due.
But, but that's like a $50 test, right, Joe?
So, it's more than that, but it's under, under 100.
Okay. Okay, so I don't, I don't have a problem tweaking this, like, what we could say is, if you didn't, well, that I don't necessarily agree with, except we're going to be. except we're going to be writing code that's different than Island County, which I don't know if that's a problem. Or if we're, since we're our own municipality, if we're allowed to write our own code on this. But septic systems are still overseen by Island County Public Health. So that's the problem, we'd have to check. But what we could do is, so if they don't pass and they're in front of, and they're next to a town sewer line, we would follow up on that because we would know whether they, you know, we would follow up until they hooked up. If they didn't pass where there wasn't a sewer line, what we could say is, you have, you have a year to get this fixed. In a year, do another, do another inspection. So that would be proof to us that they made the repairs. And then maybe you don't require it, it's a brand-new system, or it's a really repaired system, so you don't require it every year.
But have you had many conversations, Joe, with the health department, the septic folks?
I have. At previous position, that's what I was dealing with. It is, it's a very difficult subject because a failed system, you may not have the ground to repair it. So it gets very complicated. There are loans available, there's things in place in the county to help those homeowners with the failed system. But the trick is just knowing which ones are failed.
So let me ask you a different question, and this goes to you, Mayor. The county has the code for septic systems, but because these folks are within the town, the county code is still applicable to them, right?
Correct.
That's my understanding, that's my understanding, yes.
So can't we do our own requirement that says by 20, summer 2024, you have to have your septic inspected, and you have to submit the report to us, or you'll get a X amount of dollar fine? I mean, just to at least start this.
I agree. That would be outstanding.
Okay, so we'll figure out how to do that. I'm not sure if it's going to be, if it's going to be like that. I'm not sure if we put it in code, but whatever. It might just be, yeah, it might be, we might handle it differently. Okay, great, great discussion, okay. Require all new construction within 500 feet of a water main to extend the water main 25 feet into their property. We have this exact wordage for sewer lines, and for some reason, we don't have it for water. And so we would like to have it for water. Make sense? Okay. Okay, the next ones are all kind of administration, and a lot of them have to do with the new software and our, things we'll have the ability to do, and honestly, things we've been doing that we need to get formally into our code. So establish a payment plan for delinquent accounts. And some of the things that Jen, after working with delinquent accounts, she is suggesting that no payment plan can be done on new accounts. They have to have been a customer for six months. They have to have been current. They can ask for one payment plan a year. Payments have to be paid by October or up to 12 months. That's something we're still researching. Jen thinks she saw something that said that delinquent accounts have to be paid by October of every year, but that doesn't make sense to me. So we're trying to, we've got to research that. But anyway, establish a period of time that, we would set a time that the payment plans can be longer than. Customer must pay their current bill as well as the payment they've agreed to for the delinquent bill. And if the customer does not make a payment, the water is immediately shut off until the account is paid in full. We're putting that in there because it's getting us out of the requirement of notification and door hangers and stuff. They're, when they're agreeing to do the payment plan, they understand this. What do you think about that?
I only had one issue with this, and I would consider a new account to be anything under a year. So that's just me. I feel like somebody who's been a customer for six months and then leave building a rear, so they've really only been a customer for five months. So I was enjoying my mouth backwards. So that's the only thing that I saw in that one.
I, when I went through and looked at different municipalities, it was three months, six months, a year. So I just threw the number of our six months, a year. If that's something to discuss, and if that's what you guys want to do.
Yeah, if you looked at a standard and it was three to six, I just don't consider those people to be new customers.
Three, six, and 12 months are the ones that I've seen.
Well, and you've got to realize that a three and a six month from other municipalities, they would have gotten three to six bills. For us, they would have gotten one to three bills. Because, I mean, so it's a, that's a, they've got a shorter payment history with us. So it might be a reason to bring it up too.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, like.
But do you guys have, the rest of you have an opinion on that?
I don't.
Okay? And everything else is good in that? One year.
I did find the RCW, if you want that.
For the October thing? Okay, let me, what is it?
35 dot 21 dot 300.
What was the first number?
35.
35. Is it short that you can read to us?
No, it is a very long.
Okay, okay. Check into that first, don't check into that. Okay? So Jen has got three different plans down here. One is the payment plan for delinquent accounts. The next one is a flexible payment plan. Lots of our customers ask for this. We really haven't had the ability to do this. We will with the new software and with credit cards. We have a lot of people on fixed incomes and a lot of snowbirds and a lot of people that don't get their mail because they're gone. They travel a lot. And so this would allow them to set up an automatic payment every month that would be automatically made to the town based on an average of their last 12 months. And then in December or whenever, yeah, I guess we have to do it in December, we would balance up their account. Okay? This is really requested a lot from our customers. Any problem with that? Okay. The last one is a deferred payment plan. And so this is interesting, and I'm talking to Jen about what's the difference. And she said, well, it's for the people that come in and say, "My bill, I just got this late notice. You're going to turn off my water, and I don't get paid till Friday, or I don't get paid till next Wednesday." And so don't want to, you know, don't want to turn off their water, don't want to spend the staff time to do that, don't want to have their water turned off. So it's kind of like a one-sheep promissory note. Like, oh, but Jen is suggesting that they pay 50% of their bill, went right then, and then allow them to come in next Tuesday, next Friday, or whenever it is, within 14 days to pay the balance of their bill. An interesting thing about this, Jen is suggesting one deferred payment per year. This, to me, is a way to catch problem accounts that are going to be delinquent and, you know, maybe try to get them on a flexible payment plan early before they get a big balance, before, you know, try to help, before there's a big problem. Jen, I said, "Oh, do we really need this?" And she said, "You'd be surprised." Oh, I bet. People say this.
So is this something you're going to be able to track?
Uh, yeah, with the new software, we can.
Oh, they don't have a real red flag?
Essentially, yes.
No, she's saying, she's saying allow one deferred payment per year.
Mm-hmm, one deferred payment per year.
Okay, so those are the three payment programs we're looking at. We, right now, have a disconnect fee or reconnect fee, and it says within business hours, which doesn't jive with what the hours of our public work staff. So they're still being called in overtime. And so we want to be really specific and say that, that the hours, when they're going to be scheduled, it's considered a business hour would be between seven and three, seven in the morning and three o'clock. And then anything after that would be, is considered an after-hour hookup and turned back on, so that would be a higher rate. And why didn't they put the rates? We talked about the rates, didn't we?
They're down towards the bottom.
Oh, they're down the bottom. Where are they? No, they're not.
I don't know.
We did talk about, we decided on it. And she, do you remember?
Wasn't it? What was the 100? What did we talk about that you said with the 100?
That was for a shut-off fee, for lack of payment.
That's right, that was a shut-off fee. Maybe it was 75. We were just, no, I think we're just keeping it at $75.
Yeah, it is $75 right now for after-hours.
You're just, you're just making it clear what after-hours means. We're going to keep it the same.
Is that $50 during business hours?
If it's free for an emergency. Like when they call on Saturday and want one of the guys to have to be called in because they want to do some work on their sprinkler system, not an emergency. So that kind of stuff, we don't want to do. We don't want to get involved in doing it. Okay. Stronger language confirming that the property owner is ultimately responsible for the renter's delinquent utility bill. We have this in there a little bit, but we want to be more clear and have a good policy of how to do that so that the owner is being notified that his tenant is delinquent on his bill. And then, and normally, we just kind of get stuck with this because the renter will just move out, move, and we're just stuck with this big bill. So we want to really specifically put in there that the water will be turned on for a delinquent bill and that the land, we're not going to turn the water back on for the next tenant for that landlord until he pays the bill.
But would the property owner would know ahead of time that they owe money? So as soon as they owe money, you would let the property owner know?
So within the new software that we're getting, you can actually send a bill to the owner just for an FYI, or you can select to send a bill for just the delinquencies or shut-offs. And so we would kind of need to establish a procedure as far as what we would like to do. But that's definitely an option and something that would be very great to be able to do for those property owners.
Yeah, that notification would be amazing. Because then they can take care of their security for the office and something so that they can behave well on that bill.
Okay, excellent. Establish a, establish a collection practice for delinquent accounts. We, currently, we have interest and lane fees, and then we go straight to lanes. Okay, let's get serious. We've never put a lien on any of these properties for a delinquent utility bill, and realistically, we're not going to. We might just leave it in there in case we get some bizarre subject in some situation we're not aware of now. But we would, the crew works really hard to work with the customer to not only get the town's money, but to, you know, help the customer take care of this, get this bill paid. But sometimes it just doesn't work. And we don't say the words out loud in our code that we will use a collection agency, and we'd like to have that option.
Do you know?
Pardon?
Do you know anything?
Collection agencies?
No. Never had to deal with them.
Never had to deal with them.
Do you have experience with them, Jen?
A little bit. So basically, I mean, you end up, you can sell it to them. You can sell it to them, and then it's their responsibility to collect. Or you can pay them a specific fee upon them successfully getting the account collected on. So you would have to look at different, open our alphabet as far as figuring out what collection agency to use.
Ellen, I think we probably need to have something in here timing-wise on when this practice would take effect. Because you put the three, you know, sort of helping hands things in there about delinquent payments, and you can set up a schedule and that kind of thing. So after what period of time, there, things can happen.
So if they're currently like on a payment plan, their account's not declared delinquent.
So they default on that.
Then they are. But yes, I would agree that we put some type of timeframe around that.
So you came with those, maybe it sounds like you want to sort of into that a little bit more? Or just put the option in the code, and we decide whether to use it or not?
Yeah, I think it would be important to know what's the cost to the town for using septic.
Yeah.
And I just, if we do that, I would want to make sure we use someone who is that's cool and doesn't.
Yes.
They're willing to.
Sorry. Well, maybe you're saying that we don't want to do that?
Yeah, because I believe that that type of service, we would have to put an RPO for. I believe.
Oh, so you're saying we might have to take a little bit of?
Yeah. I don't know whether that's going to happen.
Well, you're, I'm feeling you're hesitant on that one. So I think we'll think about it.
Yeah, I just know having taken care of my sister-in-law's property makes me say that it will.
We can always come back to it after we've developed the better, you know, helping hand of things.
Yeah, okay. Later. Okay, consider a new account setup fee of $50 for administrative costs. I think you guys would be amazed at how many new accounts we set up and close down every single year. There are a lot of renters, Jen, lots of them. I don't suppose you can guess on how many that is yet?
Courtney told me that it's approximately 12 a month.
Oh, 12 a month.
And so that can move out and then create a new account. And if in that timeframe, let's say that somebody's moved out, and then there's a five-day window, will we transfer it to, so we have to transfer it to the owner of the property, then create the new account and move it to that?
And so that's three different meter reads and billings and.
Does $50 cover the actual cost, or it just helps?
So it would cover the actual cost of the administrative service.
With the new software.
Going out there, because we're still going to have to go out there, read the meters, and then going through and putting in the new information with this new software.
Will we quit her? Totally, I think, $70. Okay. Excellent. And the last one is establish a process and a $40 fee to deal with NSF payments. We have NSF payment procedures. It's really not explicit enough, and it's hard for us to enforce it, so we just want to beat that up. Okay. And that's it. So I want, we would, I was trying to get on the utility, I'll tell you right now. So we'll maybe consider the collection agency one later. Joe is researching whether he would like to recommend a different tier for commercial properties. He was in favor of that, as he does more research. He's kind of saying maybe not, so we're just waiting to hear what he says. And then the third one is something that we've talked about forever. And I don't know if it was within our staff after the three-hour meeting, we were just too tired to figure it out, or we, this is a hard one. The one that you require anybody with a water hookup, with a water hookup right to pay the base rate every month. But they're not really hooked up to water. They're not really using water.
So just a combination of water and sewer, right is the hookup.
Water and sewer, yes. If they have a sewer hookup.
Yeah.
Some less people just have a water hookup, not a sewer hookup. Okay, but they don't pay if they haven't bought the hookup right? Right. If they paid for the water hookup and the sewer hookup.
It just says, "Don't want your bill," but it's water.
Oh, but our bill's going to be way better with this new software because it's going to specify all of the charges. So anyway, we've gone back and forth on this. The town's been doing this for years. It's, we started doing it because we thought we had a water shortage, and we don't anymore, so.
But we should still have that, we did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But this has been challenged, and so we need to work with, we decided we couldn't make this decision. We need to have some more discussion with our attorney. So there's those two, commercial rates, base rate charges for hookups, and maybe collection agency that we will come back to you later. But we're going to start, it sounds like I can give these to you.
What is the base rate in water?
For which one?
Sewer and water.
So sewer and water together in town would be $75?
A month?
No, for two months.
You know, if that's very typical not of the sewer, because there's not many sewer systems, but for water, that's very typical in subdivisions with water systems. If they, and if they buy. If they, and if they buy that right, and they haven't used it yet, they still have to pay the base, so.
And we do have, it is currently in the code, when thinking about this, that if they do not pay that, then they forfeit the right, and will have to recapture the right again.
They don't pay for six months, I think, regardless?
Ninety days.
Oh, ninety days.
That's expensive, that would make me, I would One other thing, and I don't know if it has to do with the commercial part, but I was thinking when we were talking about these delinquent payments, that on the larger users in town, or outside of town, maybe there's also a, you know, an amount of money, because of large users besides that, hey, you can rack up a lot of delinquent payments. I don't know if that's a concern or not, like.
For larger units in town, it's generally businesses, it's they pay, they pay.
And they've never had a problem with the?
I don't know, but out of town, where the water is more expensive, I, I don't know, it seems like every delinquency I hear about is in town.
Mostly in March, yeah.
But that could be a good, if we go back to the possibility of a collection agency, that could be one of the thresholds, if the bill has to hit a certain amount of money, we have to bother with that collection agency for that. But I wanted to stress, we really try to keep our customers from getting in that position, where they're just so over their head. That's not what we really wanna help them not be in that position. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, the next one is again the same thing, public, I was just gonna look at the REPCALL, but then it's a whole public facilities administration code, and it's not very long, and when I started looking through it, there were some things that needed to be tweaked, so I just got on a roll and just decided to update the whole section of the code. So the first comment I have is on the first page about parks and recreation commission. We've not, it goes into pages of information on the park and recs commission, and I don't have a problem with any of what it says about the park and rec, but we haven't had a park and rec commission in a long time. This, I don't think, requires us to have it, so I'm suggesting that we leave it in there. If you guys don't have a problem with that, because I think we're gonna want to have a park and rec committee at some point. And it might just be a commission.
I have actually a lot of comments on this one.
Okay, okay.
And mostly because it's so confusing to stick the park and recreation commission here, where it is, and then
It is, it is more than it is here.
Also then, the definition doesn't make sense, and it's not inclusive, but it talks about recreation centers and all the facilities, and really, most of the facilities are dealt with by staff. And usually, park and rec commissions, I mean, shouldn't it be more outdoor? Because it gets very confusing reading this, and the gifts and donations, that one's just bizarre. I got very confused reading this, because most of these things are enforced by the staff, reserving public facilities and all of those.
You know why I bet this is in this section? I bet, now, I wasn't, I wasn't on the council, but this happened before me. I wonder if a park and rec commission is required by the state if you have a park impact fee, which we used to have. It was a big park impact fee, too.
It just seems to be, like, I think, public indoor facilities are managed by staff. I think you could have a park and rec commission, but it's just, like, dumped in here, and then it makes everything confusing of what they can make recommendations on.
So you're saying you don't think if the park and rec commission or committee, they should be making recommendations on outdoor spaces, open spaces, parks, that kind of thing? And not the REPCALL?
Yeah.
Or restrooms, or the pavilion, or the?
Things you, they.
I don't disagree with that.
And I also think that the definition needs to be changed, and what I might suggest, I don't know if this is too much, is putting it at the beginning, so it doesn't act like, I mean, it's right at the beginning, and then throughout it, it talks about public facilities. I mean, just, it's a weird place to put it, first of all, in the code. I just.
Or do you think, or do you think we should take it out of the code?
Well, we don't have one, and we have no immediate plans for having one, why don't we take it out, if we need to establish a park commission at some point? We can back in and do it right.
But we might not have to put it in this, I mean, maybe this is, I mean, smoking and all these things aren't something a commission can.
I was totally confused.
Am I missing a thing?
I just think years and years ago, you've been around. Well, I've been around longer than you on this, but you've been on the council, and so it must have been a while now. So unless you're, we already had a park and rec commission when I came on the council, so I would.
Nineteen ninety seven, if we're to decide.
I just think if you take it out, like you might suggest, and then that would be cleaner than if you wanted to, and I think you should establish one, that should be more of a, I mean, parks and recreation is all about active use, which is great, but I think it should also, and most towns and counties are going to parks and habitat, or parks and open space, or, you know, because that would be somewhere you could also put some of these climate resilience, you know, kinds of things into, I don't know, I think we need to think about it a little bit more. But as it's conceived here, it doesn't make any sense.
Just from a policy standpoint, you know, to give a commission these, these powers, that are really kind of administrative, you're gonna run into all kinds of conflicts.
And they did, and they did.
Okay, then you should.
They did. It is a lot, it is a lot.
No permanent reservations or anything.
It is a lot of authority, yeah. I kinda like, like, I'm kinda liking committees a little bit better these days, because you can even define, you have a project, or a problem, or a situation, or you wanna brainstorm on a climate team committee, or a park committee, or a recreation committee, and people that are interested in that subject can come together, work it out, and then and then they just ban.
Yep, I think that's a better idea, just create the paperwork at that time.
Okay. Okay, so take out anything that has to do with park and rec. We do need to have this smoking policy in here somewhere.
Well, I think the smoking is fine, it's something.
But just that section twelve point eight, we just come out and it's entire.
Yeah, and then anywhere it's referenced, which I'm not sure it's really referenced very often.
Okay. That's great.
Well, there's another place further on where you're taking it out, because it's already covered, maybe just leave that section in.
Yeah, I know, I see what you're, there was a thing that I put in there about the smoking, the smoking was in there twice. So do you need to take one of those out? Okay, so reserving public facilities, this is what I was looking for in the first place, when I first looked into this, was for the REPCALL and the kitchen shelter and the pavilion. Two things I wanna do. Right now, the kitchen shelter and the pavilion is on the same application, and for some reason, when you rent one, you get the other. Now, it's not, we don't have a lot of call for the pavilion and the kitchen shelter on the same day, but I wanna have the ability for that, because they're spread apart in the park, two different groups could be renting them and not bothering each other. So I wanna, so that's what I have, that's why I have added the park kitchen shelter to all of this. And then the second thing I wanted to do, the Valencia, reservations. Oh, just put in things like, we have, we just, we've just been letting the REPCALL go crazy. A reservation is not confirmed until the application is complete and the rental fees have been paid. The court treasurer or designated will notify the applicant of approval and the reservation confirmation. We've been getting a little bit better about that. Just because you pay the fee doesn't mean that everything's hunky dory and your application is complete, and there's still a process to that. Okay. I'm gonna flip. I took out damage deposit, then we had a horrifying experience in the REPCALL this weekend, this was not a good weekend. So Jen wants to put it back in. So go ahead, Jen, speak about why you don't put it back in.
I'd put it back in.
I can put it back in.
There we go. Actually, I think Donna had brought up a really good point, and saying, I mean, you know, if it's like a certain size or over, or if it hasn't, you know, check, check the boxes that they require food, alcohol, and both permits, maybe there is a deposit for those. But I don't necessarily know, I do agree with the mayor that having it for every single one, if it's a refundable deposit, would be a lot of work, but.
We haven't been, we haven't been doing damage deposits for four years.
Yeah, I think when you're having a meeting, like these regular meeting people on, that, I always thought it was weird, we have to pay, and many guys have to refund it.
Oh, because it had to be done by check, so we had, and we had to cash the check the day we received it. You saw on the AP, every AP would be sending back twenty REPCALL deposits, which is a lot of turnaround paperwork. Plus, the deposit was, how much was it? Was it fifty? How much?
I think it was, I think you guys said it was like fifty, but we were still in.
That's not gonna cover anything. If there's true damage, that doesn't even, that doesn't even include hiring a cleaning company if they don't clean up that themselves. So that doesn't really accomplish anything, that doesn't really pay for anything, so we haven't been doing it. I, yeah, I did like Donna's, we have, it can't just be our discretion, though. Like who we charge and who we don't charge.
If they use the commercial kitchen, you know.
They're expecting more than fifty people at their event.
They're gonna have food there, alcohol, those types of things, I, I think that a deposit is warranted, and I think that a deposit over fifty dollars would be warranted, because it would need to cover.
And you could even have, you know, like, or use the commercial kitchen, and it's, you know, something more.
For each, for each section, that's.
Each check?
Yeah.
And, and here's the deal, why she wants to do it again. She didn't experience the check nightmare, and we have this new software that will allow us to take it on
I was just gonna say.
On a credit card.
In Smartgab.
So they take their credit card, they're signing their application, that they know all the rules, they understand them, they know what they're liable for. So it, like, would allow us to actually charge the credit card for the real damage.
And do we have that on the form, the damage that they encourage to be charged to them?
Well, not right now, but we.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. So in Smartgab, technically, these are permits. You could have the registration for both of those venues as a permit, all of it would be online. The, the paying back of the deposit would actually be a very seamless transaction. It would all happen in the Smartgab system, and you'd never have to touch a piece of paper ever again.
These are what, so people just send us a credit card payment and application for any day they want under REPCALL, how do they know if it's available?
You could set it up in there, and it would come in as a request.
Or just a request?
Yeah, come in as a request.
And then it would have the payment tied to it, so if you reject it, the payment will be refunded, this goes back to express bill pay having that certification that allows them to capture those card numbers and keep them securely on their system.
So just like the workflow that Donna explained, where Joe's can see it, Jess is can see it, she's gonna see it, the same thing would apply. You just open a notification, and we're going to the workflow, Jen would see that request has been made for this day and this venue, and then you look at your calendar, figure out if it's approved or not, but it would all be automated.
And it would have the little check boxes in there, you know, if they, they want to have you know, the amplified sound, or if they have alcohol and they need the license, those are specific, just just exactly the same thing like Donna was saying, it would let you know, hey, these are things that are missing, that's gonna need to be completed before we can look at it.
Anyway. I just, we're not gonna ever have anybody in town alone anymore. I mean, we're just, I really, I worry that we're well, no, people can still come in, we can't force them to do everything online, we're obviously gonna try, but we can't.
There's gonna be a ton of people that are never like me, that are never gonna want to.
Yeah, and people are still gonna call and say, is this date available for the REPCALL?
And a lot of older people aren't, don't like that.
Which is nice, because we can actually take the phone call, and with the person standing there, we can actually input it into the system ourselves.
Okay, so anything else? Okay, so we're gonna figure out criteria for larger events. Okay, so we're not removing this. Charge is approved. I was just changing some words, it's not set by council, we put, we do our rental rates on our fee schedule that you guys approve every year, and our budget, so that's just a cleanup. Lots of administrator change to court treasurer. Okay, and here's the one, here's the second thing I was gonna go in, to say waiver of fees. Our code specifically calls out two people that we waived their fees for, one of them isn't even in existence anymore. So instead of calling out people that waive fees, I want, I would like to recommend that the town have, that the mayor has the authority to waive fees, and let me tell you, I do it very carefully, and I only do it for partner, what I consider partner organizations, like the garden club that's used in this example, the garden club takes care of four parks for us, or two, two parks, all the flower barrels, oh, and the REPCALL, the REPCALLinsky. And so, yes, I waived their two hour monthly meeting fee in the morning during the week, not a high rental rate.
I don't disagree with this, I think the wording needs to be a little bit better, because I think perhaps in the past, it's been a little too loose, but I'm not, I'm not sure, so I've just heard.
Just like it's her too, but.
The town has a cooperative agreement, but I don't even know what a cooperative agreement is, but it's kind of, I don't know, like, it's somewhat like in lieu of, I mean, like, you're trading services or something, like we do with the town of, or the county, with the county, but it actually has to be something tangible of, rather than, because there's a lot of nonprofits and volunteer groups and other groups that do all kinds of things in town. It has to be something very, with a little bit more sideboards.
Okay. I told a lot of them that.
No, and it's not just for you, this is for the future, because you could have a whole different mayor who who has, I think there needs to be some sidebar, so it's very consistent, no matter who's the mayor.
And the terms need to be defined, I mean, what's a town partner, that's not, that's not defined in the part near, I have no idea what that is.
That to me was like the chamber, the Cooperated Waterfront Association, the reserve, people that we ongoing do events and do cooperative things together.
I think that's, I mean, I think the two that you have here are good ones, but I'm not sure, just because you have a nonprofit in town, that's what their business is. I mean, I'm gonna, this pink museum, they have a great facility, but then you're gonna get people to say, well, this group does the things too, because if you didn't, if we weren't doing this, and pretty soon, and it's not that much money, meaning fees. But there's, there's a tangible trade in the two cases that you mentioned.
Okay. So to go more defined standards for, standards, I'm just gonna say that, I know what that means. Okay. So then that, it's just more of changing words. Amplified sound, this, this says amplified music, our permit is amplified sound, so just, again, just housekeeping. Noise in public facilities, this was written, obviously, a long time ago, before we had noise ordinance, so I wanna just make that consistent. Overnight camping or parking. Right, this is all talking about overnight camping, I wanna specifically spell out the word parking, because you have to be so clear on what you're restricting if you, to be able to enforce it. So I'm, so I'm suggesting we say camping or parking in our town parks and our parking lots and our town line.
I kinda don't understand why the introduction is here, because it sounds like that there could be overnight camping, but really, if it started, it is unlawful, it said this section is intended. It's unlawful. Yeah, and there is none. So if you take that first sentence out, this section is intended, and start with, it is unlawful to camp overnight. and start with it is unlawful to camp overnight.
Or just overnight camping and parking in town parks or on town land is not allowed.
Any violation of the reserve. Oh. Well, wait a second. There is parking when we do the arts and crafts.
And that's in here. As the town council or as three, the town council or mayor. For special public events, we approve exceptions to this chapter.
What section are we on? I have a follow.
We're on section.
005 or 006 at the bottom?
Oh, Joe has something to say. 005 or 006, and we just, we just ended that and moved to the top of 006 or 006. So this doesn't. Oh, yes. Joe, Joe, Joe. Go ahead, Joe.
I, I think you caught it, but yeah, there is exceptions to parking overnight. And then I think we'd need to work on the right of way code, but that will be later. But yes, you already caught it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then section 1205, 105 is exactly the same as 1208, 075. So you guys already caught that. So just take that out. Enforcement penalties. That's just kind of, this is kind of like the whole section. And that's it. Okay, so I'll work on those. And these, of course, this code, this is just discussion, actual, the final thing will be brought back to you.
The final day or the fourth probably.
Yes, yes, yes. That would be good. Thank you, I appreciate your time. And that's good, saves us from, I can get you a better, get you a better final product. Okay, then the last thing on our agenda is an executive session. And it is to consider the selection of a site or acquisition of real estate for lease or purchase. One public knowledge regarding such consideration could cause the likelihood of an increased price or a decreased price. I am going to say that this is going to take 20 minutes. So that will be, what is that, 9:05? We will not take any action during or after the executive session. We will reconvene only for the purpose of the journey. So, oh, wait, wait, we need to take a five minute break to help Jen break down. So I'm going to say we're going to end at 9:10. 9:10, okay? Because we need to help Jen get cleaned up. Oh, I need to take a break too. Okay, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody online for being with us.
So am I invited to the executive or am I dismissed?
I don't think you need to be here. Do you want to be here? Huh?
Only if you want.
You can be, Joe.
Probably not.
I'll get your opinion tomorrow.
Then I have to be here. Or I can have.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you, Jen can't leave if you're still on.
I'm leaving. Good night.
Okay, okay.